So then the other option is called a permanent override. This is a little more difficult to pass in that it's a two thirds, a two thirds majority to pass. And then I'm not going to read through everything. I think that's about all you need from that one. Go, go to the right a little. I think there's actually, see if there's a third one.
Now, on that permanent one, would that have to be redone? Is it done on dollar amounts or is it done on levy percentages?
Dollar amounts.
So we would have to say, okay, we want a permanent of this amount. But then when that proved insufficient because of inflation, we'd have to do another one.
No, it, it can grow at three percent, at three percent by each year.
So basically what that one would do is with the two thirds vote, we could essentially get out of the LID system that we're in and just use property tax revenue, tax across the board. City covers the costs of what would have been covered by LIDs. Yeah. So that would only need once and then three percent like every other city is held to under the current laws. Okay.
Correct.
Good to know. Thank you. I just get my brain figured out on what's what.
Yeah. And there's a couple of things you can't exceed the levy limit, which we're going to show you way, way, way under that. A couple of things that you'd have to do is, you know, we, we can confirm this with the state tax commission, but I believe it would just be part of your general levy. And then what we would do internally is we would transfer it from the general fund to the street repair fund each year so that that money was specifically earmarked for that purpose. So, so let's go down and then to the left. Go to the next set. So, and like I said, I'm not going through every single one of these, but so it's just gives some, some cautionary things of how you should name or word things on a ballot. Because, you know, as a city, you know, we have to just be providing information, right? We can't be saying, hey, go out and vote yes for this, right? It's just more informational as our, is to get the information out there. The big thing I think is giving them examples of how much it would cost them. And it seems like the easiest way to generally do that is to say per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value would cost you 24 bucks or whatever it is, right? And then, whoops. So as we go through this, keep going down. And then if we were to get to this point and go do this, the state tax commission is they offer their services to help cities write these so that they're complying with the law and that they're, the information makes the most sense. I'm going to go back. Did we lose Eric?
Hope I'm here.
So I'll just talk about a levy rate for a minute. So we, we're, there is a levy limit and I have it in here. We'll show you the kind of limits. And there's, there's a couple of things that cities can do for levies. As we looked through that list, we felt like probably just the general levy for the general fund. So go down, guys. And then to the right a little. There you go. Keep going to the right and then just go down. So right here where it says taxing authority Idaho code as they go down and we can see it. I'll show you the levy limits.
Goes down more?
Yeah, there you go. And then go to the right just a little more so they can see it. There you go. Okay. So, so this is, you'll see, these are the kind of the max levies if you, or max rates, if you will. And so if you keep going down, go down to where it says general fund point oh oh nine. So that's an important number to kind of keep in your head. And now, and there are some other things. It's interesting. There's one that says improvement of streets, no limit. So we could certainly do some research on that, see what that means.
So just, and you know, we all, we mentioned last night that see the point oh oh nine is maximum. We're at point oh oh three, one, two, four, or something like that.
Yeah, we'll show you that.
Okay.
So go, go to the left now. I know I'm taking you all over the place, but. Okay. So here is, this, this came out in the fall. This is the most common tax code area. It's one thousand. And if you go down, go down just a teeny bit so they can see the total. So if you look at the very bottom, that's the total for all of the taxing entities, right? So which, which if you're a resident, you're going to, you're going to pay into all those entities, right? The city one is point oh oh three, one, two, eight. So that kind of gives you an idea. We're, we're barely, barely above a third of what that max is, right? And so now if you go down, I'll show you the analysis on how I think you could derive the number here. Okay, perfect. So if you look at the code levy for the city, the point oh oh three, one, two, that's in cell E eighty nine. And then our budget for 2025 right now on property taxes about six point nine million. And so what I did is I just calculated the assessed value knowing those two numbers. And if you look to the right, I just got a letter from the county on March 12th, 2025. And you can see the net taxable value is almost dead on with what I calculated. I mean, we're talking like five thousand dollar difference. And so now, now go back to the left. So if we were to come in and we were to say, hey, we want to do a permanent override. We want to increase the budget. We're just throwing a number in here and we can change this number if you want. So if you throw out a million dollars, your new budget would be seven point nine million, which means that you're, you're going to have the same assessed value, but you're going to have a new levy rate, which you see down below at point oh oh three, five, seven. So you can see what that levy increase is at point oh 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 four, five. And what does that mean per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value? It means forty five dollars. So if you were to change the number in orange to five hundred thousand, it'd be half that of that forty five dollars. So here's a couple of examples on the left. So we said, well, we're sorry, if you were there, sorry, my bad. So if you look at the, in row one oh nine, this is an example of a large apartment complex. So I went out and I looked at a real complex that's on the tax rolls, right? They're assessed at twenty eight point eight million dollars. They would have to pay approximately thirteen thousand dollars a year. But if you compounded that over thirty years, they would have paid in about six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And I'm compounding it at three percent, right? Because we can take a three percent growth on that number each year. A townhouse, so I chose a townhouse that was in a, a pretty, it was actually over in Summerfield, I was saying. So that came out, it was about three hundred and twenty three after the homeowner's exemption in assessed value. So that'd be about a hundred and forty six or almost seven thousand dollars over the thirty years. And then you can see single family home. I gave you a couple of examples. One was a, a smaller one. So that'd be similar to like what you find at Summerfield, which is typically less furnished, right? So probably a little less curb and gutter and sidewalk. Something like that comes in at a hundred and fifty eight in the first year. Over the thirty years, it's about seventy five hundred bucks. And then if you go to a, a bigger home, it's a very large home, right? Fifty seven hundred square feet. You know, that would be three eighty three year or approximately eighteen thousand, two hundred and five dollars. And then I even did an example of like a large big box. You know, that would be about four hundred sixty nine thousand over the thirty years. So, so hopefully that helps kind of give you an idea of how, just visualize kind of what those amounts would be. The one thing that is hard with this, right? Is even if we were to put this out and it was voted in and approved, you're probably not going to see funding on it for at least a couple of years. I mean, I mean, you would have to put it out to vote. I don't think you would make this election in May. But you would have to put it out there. And then once it was passed, so let's just say that it passes next May, not this May, but next May. Basically what happens is we then included in our budget process. And then we would see kind of the first amount of that in January of the following year. So January of twenty twenty seven. So, so I mean, really this option, you're still several years out or it would even work assuming it passed, right? So any questions on that? Does that help? Kind of visualize that.
So those numbers that are coming in compounded three percent over thirty years, that's for the million.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many LIDs are generally assessed every year put together?
We just generally do one LID each year.
One year. And the one that is being looked at, is it a relatively large one or is it an average kind of looking?
Let's, let's go look at them. It's a very large.
Cause I, I know that there's three and again, I'm the new guy, so I'm just trying to get my brain wrapped around it.
A little larger.
Is it a little larger than usual? And I, and I see that I think if I remember right, it's about a million dollars that the, if it were to go in, the local homeowners would be paying is about a million dollars. So this example would cover that and it's a pretty big one. So for, in the future, at least for a while, that million dollars would be more than adequate for the repairs that we would need to take care of. Is that?
Yeah, that, that would be the hope that, that would carry us, right? And have a little, maybe a little extra. But I mean, depending on what the prices do, right? I mean, obviously we're seeing a ramp up pretty rapidly. Hopefully it'll level off or, but also in that is, so this would be a little bit different, the sewer line. So just want to make sure everybody realizes that a sewer line replacement is also in that, that million dollar cost.
Yeah. And by that you mean the part that just goes to the homeowner's property?
Yep.
To the main line that's under the street?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, it's really main line to the, kind of the back of the curb is the. Yeah, back, just past the back of the curb. That way, when it fails, they're not in the street.
They're not having to dig up the street to fix the problem. It would, if it failed, it would be on the homeowner's property and going through a lot or something.
Yeah.
So you, you've projected thirty year cost here. We found it at three percent.
Yeah.
If you did LED fifty four this year, how many years before you'd have to go back and do that area again? Is it tied to the life of the street?
Well, I mean, the thirty year would be an ideal life. Obviously, right, as we talked earlier, we're like fifty years. Some, some roads we're going to hit sooner, which means the other roads are going to be longer. Just because those main roads have heavier traffic and they deteriorate faster, right? With higher volumes of traffic. And so that's why some of those, and Matt just took thirty years to use as kind of a, a rough idea of what, what does that look like?
Cause what I'm seeing is with the levy, they pay less.
What's that?
With the levy, they pay less than they would with an LID.
Well, the, the homeowner, yes. But not like, not your commercial, not your, your other ones, right? They're, they're going to, they're going to pay more, right?
And it's the assessed value of property.
That's how it is in property tax, right? Commercial always subsidizes residential a little.
Not as much as they used to. It's changed over the last four years after COVID.
Everybody probably here can attest that our property values on residential way up, yeah. And commercial didn't really do that. So it kind of shifts up and down.
Well, and, and honestly, that's, we get that question all the time from people like, hey, it's been five years. I'm paying double the property tax. And what a lot of people don't understand is it's a shift of that pie, right? Because we, we have a set budget that goes up that three percent and a little bit for new construction or annexation, right? We're not just saying, hey, we have double money now. Yeah. But what happens is commercial and ag may stay the same or they may start to shrink and then residential starts to get bigger. And that's what's happened with residential because homes are assessed at at least double, I would say, after six years, right? And so, so that's what's happened is they are picking up a bigger portion of that pie, so to speak, as residents.
Can I, so, and I'm so thankful for all this information. I think it's really important. I just want to say right now to make sure in our limited time, because to me, I think we could start with the simplest solutions. So, you know, like a carryover for streets was like seven point two million. You know, we carried over for this fiscal year, six point seven million the year before, four point six for the two years before that. So we have a pretty sizable carryover in our streets budget. So to me, I would want to look at that first and see all the projects that are earmarked that we don't get to. That, that's where I would want to start. And then a little while ago, we said, let's stay out of residential areas as much like a few years ago. That was kind of a direction from the council. So, you know, could we, could we keep down that, that alley? Could we patch more? Could we, you know, could we file down sidewalks? Could we do fewer streets in the LID? So that's where I would want to start before we ever talked about a levy override. But, but that's just me. I would want to start with the simplest. So I hope tonight we're going to have time to talk about the simplest solutions too.
And just to kind of add on to that, I think that's a great way to go. However, if it is going to cost, if it is going to be almost two years, we at the same time do need to look at the long range thing. Because if we simple, 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 and then it doesn't meet the needs and then we start looking long term, we're still going to have that almost two year challenge. So I absolutely agree. That could be a great way to fill the gap while we're looking at, at a long term thing. And another thing that you said I thought was interesting that I'd never considered before, that I think it's important to bring up, make sure the council understands is people that just happen to live on a busier street under the current system are going to be hit with LIDs more often than somebody that just happens to live in a quieter part of town, for lack of a better phrase or word, that their streets might last longer because there's not so much traffic. And that I also see is maybe an issue of, of equity or something like, you know what I mean? Just that, that they might end up with an LID every twenty to twenty five years where somebody else, just based on the fact that they're in a non-traffic area, they're not going to have an LID, but every thirty five years. And that is a, a bit of an inequity as well in the way it's being done right now, which is, I think, something to keep in the air as we look at all these things.
Yeah. And I agree with that. And also I just, we can't control whether a levy passes. But we can control our budget. So to me, that makes more sense just because we don't know if we'll ever have the opportunity.
Yeah, we don't know if it'll pass or not.
We don't know, but we can control how we spend our.
Go to the, let's have you, Deb, go ahead and hit that street one on the right. I'll show you that real quick. So, so this is, you shrink it just a teeny bit and then it will all be on one page hopefully. Okay. So, so when we look at streets, you have to keep in mind, we have, we have many funds, right? Associated with streets. And so, so street fund two is really where we do all of our maintenance. And the way that we do it is we, we bring in kind of those general taxes. So franchise fees, sales tax, highway tax, whatever you want to call it, right? We bring that in, shouldn't say sales tax.
No, fuel tax.
Fuel tax, sales taxes, general fund. So street two, that comes into street maintenance, but you'll notice we never carry over anything in street maintenance. And that is because whatever is left after the maintenance that we do each year, we transfer typically to fund forty three, sometimes to fund forty four, depending on what construction projects we have in our capital improvement plan. And so that's why there's no carryover there. And street impact, of course, you can't, you know, you can't pull from that for this purpose. And that has to be used specifically for identified projects in that analysis for impact fees. And it has to be to add that capacity. And that's basically newcomers paying for their proportion of share, right? So that you don't reduce your service level as our city grows, basically. And then street reconstruction and new street construction is where we put the projects that are on the capital improvement plan typically, not always there. Sometimes we'll use this second Easton Moody Construction Fund, just because we had so much going on there. We needed a dedicated fund. And then fund eighty five is what we call the street lighting. And that of course has to be used for street lighting as well. So really, if you think about it, the, the areas that you really potentially can use are fund forty three and forty four. And that's why down below I've shown that carryover amounts. And so if you look at twenty twenty, we carried over about one point three. Twenty twenty one, it was about two point three. And you guys can read as good as I can, but the, the average shows at about two point eight. Generally, like we're forecasting going forward because we are seeing forecasted our levels of sales tax and highway tax are going down as per the state forecasting that they do for, and they're predicting for us, I guess you could say, for our budgeting. And so we, I think we met earlier this month and we, we basically told you, you have about two point five, right? Wasn't it right at two point five? And so, so really that's, that's an important point, right? Because you look at it and you're like, whoa, we carried over seven point one million in twenty twenty four. But the reality is we carried over four point seven in forty three and forty four. And then the other thing that you have to consider is we are carrying over those amounts oftentimes where they're already encumbered. Meaning that we already have the project and it works. It just didn't happen in that last fiscal year. It may be happening in October and November, which is a new fiscal year. And, and, or it just may be under design slated for the next spring, right? To start. And so you have to keep that in mind. We also have to report to the state our future projects. We do it by reporting our five year plan. So I go out, I work with, I get with the engineers. They identify the five years of projects basically in these two funds. And then you can see what those are. So like in twenty twenty four, we basically had identified that we were going to need approximately thirteen point two million. And I did ask Justin, I said, were you increasing those for inflation? And he, and he said, I don't think so, which we probably should in the future. Because thirteen point two today is not going to give you thirteen point two million in the streets in five years. We know that. And so, so anyways, that, that's the streets. Any questions on that? So one thing I would just mention kind of as a cautionary, right? As we look at, what do we spend and where do we go from there? These large projects that, that we're looking at, that we're trying to figure out, right? Overpasses over US twenty. Obviously we hope to get federal funds, right? To do something like that, but oftentimes they have matches. But when you're talking a twenty million dollar project or a thirty million dollar project, that, that match can be quite large. And so just in thinking of that, we, having some money in reserve if we're doing that is, is beneficial, right?
So, so Keith, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can.
Okay. So if, if I'm reading this right, what you're telling us is that even with the carryover, the seven million dollar carryover, we're still short eight million dollars as far as that five year plan goes to complete the projects that we have, that we're trying to, that we, we'd like to complete in the five year plan. Is that correct? Am I, am I reading that right?
Yeah. And you're reading the twenty twenty four year, that is correct.
Yeah. Okay. So, so that, that, that just doesn't give us a lot of, a, a, a lot of leeway to be able to pull from the carryover to, to complete the project we want to do. Now, if we, if that was temporary, you know, for a year or maybe two, until, you know, the kind of, I, it seems to me sort of a long shot of getting a, getting a levy increase passed. I can see that temporarily, but, but if we do that for a year or two and then we don't get a, don't get a bond passed, levy increase passed, then it puts us two years behind our, our five year plan. And, and we've basically stolen from, from Peter to pay Paul. Am I correct?
Yeah, you are. Did you have a comment?
Oh, I was just going to say, so I know, I, I think probably this opinion is not shared. But, but what I'm saying is, you know, like this is the twenty twenty three streets reports budget and we have ten million earmarked for projects in the next five years. So what I'm saying is maybe we can't do as many projects as we had planned. Or we look through and see, do we really get to all those projects? Like what would happen if we didn't do as many LIDs in residential neighborhoods? And see where we could cut back? What would happen if we patched Park Street instead of completely redoing it? What would happen if we filed down the sidewalks, like places where we could save money instead of just completely gutting everything regularly? Like look at that. Is that really the best move? Or are there places where we don't have to do that? And, and just analyzing it that way is what I'm saying. Can we do fewer streets projects? And I know probably, you know, I know, I know our roads are not in, a lot of them are not in great shape. But I feel like the residents are telling us this is a burden on them. So can we do something different? That's, that's.
Yeah, it's a struggle and it's always a balancing act. I mean, that's, you know, every year when we do these LIDs, of course, it's always, it's a burden. But one of the biggest complaints we get from people is, our roads too. So it's always that balancing act of, you know, how much do we try to put into them? And, you know, how many projects do we try to get done? And then have some savings, some reserve on hand for, you know, some of the things that Keith, Keith mentioned. And we have to come up with a match for, for federal grants so we get to do a big project. So it's all, it's all part of that, part of that balance.
But I mean, there's nothing that says we have to do X many residential roads.
No, there isn't. It's just, you know, the more, the, the longer we wait, the more they fall apart, right?
I do understand that, but I think that maybe like Park Street to me doesn't even look like it's the worst road out of all of our roads, you know, out of all of our residential.
By the church, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's not probably one of the worst. It's not great, but yeah.
So I'm just saying, could we, could we analyze like our criteria and, and change some things that way? Cause I honestly don't think that levy will ever pass. So maybe I'm just a test.
I think you're a realist, actually.
So I'm just saying, maybe we need to look at other things if that's not an option.
You, you probably do because until it's passed, it really isn't an option, right? It's not a solution.
Yeah.
So.
So they, just if I could, sorry. So Keith, tell me, how, how do you go about your plan? I mean, are, is your, is your philosophy to go in and just tear the streets up all the time? Do you look at, do you look at the possibility of extending that, the life of a street by, by doing patching? And, and, and maybe the, the, what you call it, where you redo the, the surface? Yeah, the crabs. I mean, what's your philosophy as far as fixing these streets?
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously we're trying to, obviously with the limited funds, right? I mean, we already are well aware of that, right? If based on our current budget, it's every, a little over every fifty years to get around to all our streets and all our asphalt. And so obviously over the, over the years, right? We've taken on kind of more responsibility with our street departments, with crack sealing, buying a Dura Patcher to try and stretch those streets as far as possible. Now, at a certain point, especially on your high volume roads, right? As that, as you look at that curve, it really starts to, to drop off quickly. Once it starts, once you start having water pond up and you get those potholes, it really will start to deteriorate quickly on that. And so we do look at doing chip seals, slurry seals. So we're always trying to stretch as, as far as we can. I always say, when our garbage trucks can't make it, then we have to be, be in there to fix it. Cause especially in neighborhoods. And we did have a spot where our garbage truck sunk up to its axles. And so obviously we had to get in there. Patching is obviously gets more expensive. As you do it over time now, small patches, obviously we're going to have some cost in that. But when you start looking at bigger sections, at some point you just say, we've got to do that, that whole section of road instead of trying to do a quilt work when I'm looking at not, not your typical pothole, but more of that whole maybe fifty to a hundred feet of road is, is shock, right? And, and really a lot of it boils down to what's happening with the waters. Water getting infiltrating into that base and then making it soft. And so then all of a sudden with those loads going over, it starts pumping and starts moving that asphalt. And then it really starts breaking, breaking up your asphalt. But I mean, that's kind of a long answer to your question of, yes, we try and maximize. And obviously we're just trying to go into those areas. Now, there's, there's roads that are, are pretty rough in neighborhoods that we're not, not going into at this, this point. Right? And that was based on council's direction to say, well, let's, let's try and focus on get our, our main roads in better shape with that. And a lot of times, some of the stuff we look at and is crabs process where we pulverize the existing asphalt, reuse that as a base and then pave over. It's kind of. as a base and then pave over. It's kind of similar to what a lot of people do is an overlay where you put a fabric over. A lot of times you get that reflective cracking that comes up through the street um on those, and obviously, the cracks are areas where water can infiltrate down end, so we're always trying to seal what we can.
In the interest of time, let's let's go ahead and move forward with kind of ideas that we're looking at for.
Real quick, one one last question, Keith, real quick, is uh that Park Street Road, is that considered a pretty highly trafficked road? I don't live in that area. I honestly don't know. I know there's a lot of cross streets from that subdivision that connect to it from Seagull down to Pioneer, but is that a pretty heavily tracked traffic road?
Uh, I would say the people on Park Street would say yes.
They do. They is one of the arteries going across. They've changed a little bit because we narrowed up Park Street. And they now go to the south a little bit, but that is one of, if you talk to the apartments over there, that is one of the arteries over.
Okay.
But like I say, to me, some of the worst roads is Gemini areas over there than what Park Street is, cause I have other.
Well, there's a there's a portion of Park Street that's that's really bad, right? Right next to the church around that corner. Um, the sections that are the older portion, and then you have the newer subdivision that came in and kind of matched up with it. And that's where you kind of run into that problem of, well, do I try and just do a patch to the new one and and it's not really new, it's old? Or are we better off just to come through and do that whole section and then be done and and be out of there, right? Cause when you have sections, one section that's better than the other section, and then that fails, and then you're trying to come in. A lot of times it's better just to come in and and do the whole thing um at once than trying to kind of piecemeal that back in. So I would say on Park Street, that's that's the issue we're facing with that one.
And then do it, sorry, just one more question. So anytime that you redo a road, you have to redo the sidewalks?
No, so the mandatory, so federal regulations would say the ADA, the corners, we have to do the corners. Um, the rest of it is if we're gonna come in and and touch it, then we're supposed to bring it up to that standard. The problem, obviously, we run into anywhere we have sidewalk against the curb, right? Those cross slopes are far greater at the driveway sections than the two percent. And so you start looking at that and then start moving forward. But generally speaking, what the council has made the determination in past is how far do you want that to deteriorate? Right? And so if you don't do something, and then we we do, we come in and say we're thirty years or forty years down the road, how far is that going to deteriorate? Are the homeowners gonna take um step up and say, oh, that's deteriorated, we're gonna come in and fix it? That generally isn't the case. Sometimes it is the case, homeowners will come in and say, oh, that's really bad because they're concerned about tripping hazards and things like that lawsuits. Um, but that's that's kind of in the past what the council has looked at and say, you know, maybe we should kind of lift this standard up and not let it continue to deteriorate. I mean, obviously, we're doing the street curb and gutter, but the sidewalk as well. And so that that was a thought with previous councils.
But so it is an option to not do sidewalks when you redo streets, like we don't absolutely have to do that.
Yes, unless and unless I'm changing the curb line and the slopes, and if the sidewalk's right up against it, sometimes we gotta, we've gotta adjust those. But generally speaking, we could probably get away from doing sidewalks.
So I think that's.
What about non-existing sidewalks? I mean, isn't there, isn't there by ordinance that those have to be put in? At some point?
Yep. Yeah, there is an ordinance that the city had passed years and years ago to have sidewalks, they wanted sidewalks throughout the city.
So it's if you move, right?
No, it's just a blanket ordinance, and then how we've kind of been enacting it is just if they move, if we're doing re reconstruction um or if the council just opted to say, it's time to put it in.
Okay, let's let's hit the general fund one, Dad. We'll take you through this one and then we'll jump into the specifics of the kind of the ten year history of the OEDs and then and then we have the analysis specifically for OED fifty four. So um what this one is, so I was asked to to just show you the general fund and kind of what services are we paying for with those general dollars, right? So when we say general dollars, we're talking about sales tax, we're talking about property tax, those are two. Uh, and I'll show you some of the other ones down below here in just a second. So I did, I did four years, I did three years of actual twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four, and then I also did the twenty twenty five budget. Of course, we're in the middle of that, so I couldn't give you the actual. And so and then I did the average per year, and then out to the far right, I did the total average subsidy subsidy per year for each um each of the different services. So starting out on the left here, we'll just kind of hit them. So recreation, um and this is a common question. I mean, people ask this, you know, how much do we subsidize recreation? So if you look at it, that average uh subsidy for the four years that we've shown there is about four hundred and ninety two thousand. That's recreation. And a couple of things to keep in mind is there there's a couple of ways, there's really two ways to subsidize, if you will, with the general fund. You either pay for it directly out of the general fund or you transfer it to the respective fund where that program is. So like rec programs is fund oh three, so we do a transfer out on that. Now, they have done a really good job. The last couple of years, we've cut out a lot of services that were highly su- uh subsidized. And so you see in twenty twenty four, our subsidy went down to fifty seven hundred. We, of course, subsidize um Rexford Rapids mainly for capital replacement. And and from the beginning, that was something we established to just make sure that we were taking. Um, and then rec admin is just the the positions that basically run all recreation, right, and it's paid directly out. So I won't take that long on every category, but that kind of just gives you an idea of the process that we went through. Um, cultural arts, which includes tabernacle, romance, legacy, and then there's the specific Rexford Cultural Arts Fund. So you can see that that average subsidy was about six eighty six. If you look at last year, last year was was a huge year. It was about one point three million, mainly because we repointed the tabernacle to the tune of almost nine hundred thousand dollars to take care of that. And so um police, you know, we are, the average subsidy is about five point nine, but if you look at last year or this year's budget, it's about six point four. And this is generally a budget you never see go down. Uh, because there's, it's generally, we're regrowing in that department each year as our city continues to grow. And they don't have, they really don't have a lot of capital in the police. So this is really primarily operational, if you will, but you do notice that we do have that uh fund transfer to set aside money uh for a future building. So that's that's part of that analysis. And then fire, uh very similar to police, right? It's you're not typically gonna see this go down. Some years you might, just because of uh capital projects. I would say that they're a little heavier on the capital side than police because they have very expensive equipment that you have to purchase. You start talking about trucks, fire trucks that are over a million dollars each. If you get the ladder trucks, et cetera, right?
And I'm sure you all know, but that just to point out that one point seven on the fire is just our share of the three entity, right?
That's correct. Yeah, and that's, oh, I should have it memorized, but it's, I think we're kind of like in the high thirty percent. So when you think about fire services, uh countywide and ambulance services countywide, um the city is paying approximately uh thirty something percent of that for just the fire side of it, right? Because all residents are paying, whether you're in the city or not, you're paying into the ambulance district, and that's how that's funded. So uh parks and trails, so as you look at that, um this is another one that we we don't typically see it go down. Um, but we have had a few grants that have maybe, like you can see last year, we were at about a million thirty seven, this year at nine ninety three. But the average, you can see over on the right, for over a million bucks. Um, and then if you look at uh oh, and there's a couple of things we're doing there, I should probably know. We're putting a little money aside for trails. And then we are setting aside money periodically for parks capital reserve. Uh, the main thing for that in the last couple of years has been like the hundred thousand last year was for pickleball. Remember, we set aside some money for future pickleball courts. And then, of course, we're doing the the conversion of the Smith Park to pickleball this this spring and summer. Um, airport is a fifty fifty ownership with the county, and we're averaging right around fifty thousand bucks that we put in. So we're doing fifty, the county's doing fifty, so it's about a hundred thousand dollar subsidy. And then with airport, it's, I mean, it's important to note, like, we didn't, if it wasn't an FAA airport, it would be astronomical what that number is because they're funding ninety percent of the projects through the FAA. So um golf is also a joint venture, fifty percent with the city and the county. And and of course, we've got the two golf courses, and we are, we're sending approximately ninety six, ninety seven thousand on average to that. Right now, what we're doing is, it's a little lower right now. We've actually lowered that subsidy compared to two years ago anyways. And we are setting aside because we know that we're gonna have to replace irrigation system at T-Town Lakes, probably within the next ten years. So between the golf operations, the county and the city, we're all putting money into a fund to do that. Um, fiber is just kind of, this is over now, right? But but uh and that was grant funded anyways. I have, I show it anyways here, but uh anyways, we we did the fiber ring right after COVID, right? And then that's what led to the public-private partnership, if you will, with Silver Star, which is getting basically all of our residents and businesses connected with fiber, so. Um, and then we do have some other small ones I won't hit. Let's go down. So here's the other general fund departments. And what I did here is I did a fund net, I just expenses less revenue um so that you just kind of have that net expense, if you will. So I won't hit them all, but you can see some of the biggies are uh those dang finance people, it costs you some money, but uh finance is in there, IT is a fairly large one. Uh, you've got planning is actually a pretty significant one as well. So as you kind of look to the right, you see what those are. And then, so those add up to about four point one million. And then you have, so you have your total expenses, all general fund departments, or net expenses, I should say, is about fifteen million. Now, here's the revenues. So how do we pay for all that? Um, so some of it is overhead charges, and so we we can go out and charge an overhead to to those that have uh funding in place. So for example, um we we will charge the business type funds or the proprietary type funds, and they'll pay an overhead. Uh, another example would be like building inspection, they're gonna pay an overhead for those services, whether they're IT, legal, or finance, right? And then you have some other revenues that add up to about two and a half million. Property tax averages about six point five, but you can see, you know, that one's that one's growing. Um and so anyways, it's close to seven million in this year's budget, and then sales tax, of course, is also a big one. The, I will just tell you, the problem with sales tax is, sales tax is very volatile. And so it will go up and down very quickly depending on the economy, right? And so, but anyways, that's, hopefully, that helps you guys kind of understand because I mean, this, if you were gonna pull it from the general fund, then, you know, you would have to instruct on where you're gonna cut it out, which services you're gonna cut out. And and I didn't put it, I didn't bring it to this meeting, but I know I've probably shown it to you four or five times in the last couple of years. But that reserve in the general fund is dropping fairly significantly and steadily. Uh, a little more than than I'm comfortable with, to be quite honest. And so I don't know that you're gonna find a ton here, but that's, you know, your decision. If there's something that you wanted to cut out and find it here, it's, those are the areas you'd have to look at. So, that help? Okay, let's jump, uh Dad, go to the left, and then we're gonna jump into the ten year history real quick. And that, there's some more tabs, sorry, it's that little pen things in the way. Uh, do the one to the right of that, probably gonna be easier. Yeah, just shrink it just a teeny bit. Okay, so what we did is we went out and we said, okay, let's look at all of the LIDs over the last ten years. And and this is a great way to see what we're talking about when we say this is a really big LED, this is a really small LED, right? Because sometimes we tackle four or five or six roads, sometimes we do a couple. And it just really depends on the the bandwidth and then the availability of that cash, how big we can go. And then also the condition of those roads, right, if there's dire needs. So if you look at the total cost, you can see LED forty five, that was ten years ago, was about six hundred and eighty one thousand. Um, but if you work your way to the right, LED fifty four.
I'm offline, so I can't do that. In the meantime, you can get directions, make calls, and play radio.
She's gonna take over.
So if you look to the right on LED fifty four, which is column P, then you can see that that is a a very large project. That's four point five million dollar project, city would be three point five million. And then we're looking at nine ninety seven, five hundred on the property owner cost. Now, we did go through and we said, well, let's look at removing if we were to just strictly say we're gonna stay with the policy, we're only looking to find money to cover replacement costs for curb and gutter and sidewalk. Then we stripped out the new new sidewalks, so that's the cost for people that don't have existing sidewalk, right? I don't know that there was a whole bunch of curb and gutter, right, not much, probably. And then we, there's also a sewer cost, so those are those hookups for sewer. And then there's a little bit for landscape and and asphalt. So if you go to the right, Dad, let's look at the three year average. I think that's probably the most, it's more relevant, just because, as you can see, costs have risen quite a bit over the last three to five years. Um, but anyways, you can see if we deduct all that out, instead of being um your three year average being about five hundred and fifty eight thousand, it would drop to about three ten. If the city council was said, we're only interested in participating in replacements. Does that make sense? And so go down just a little, I can't remember what our last. Oh, and then what we did is we we said if this is just, we were just simply looking at it as if if we were trying to determine a bond election amount, uh we added the thirty percent participation to the number, and so that took the three ten to four oh three. So anyways, that, hopefully, that helps, um. Any questions on that one?
That makes sense?
The averages for the uh property owner, the average for the city total for the last three years?
Three, uh it's it's the one in column S, if you look at column S. That's the property owner right there. Yeah, and if you, oddly enough, if you look to the right, it it uh drag it to the right just a little. We looked at the ten year and the three year average, and they both came out to about the same, which was the city's covering eighty five percent of the total cost. The the property owner fifteen percent. So, and that's just, they both worked out that way.
Well, help me understand though, really quickly, if we were to say we're just doing, we're gonna take care of all of the asphalt and, you know, the road construction and the curb and gutter. What, where's that number in there? How much does that drop down what the property owners are being asked to?
So that's what we're gonna show you next. We're gonna do it specifically for LED fifty four.
Okay, yeah, and that's that's kind of what I was.
Yeah, so that's a different spreadsheet, uh Deborah, it's in that packet. We'll pull that up and show you right now.
It is interesting to note what a small, I know I've already said this, a small percentage of our total budget is the property owner's cost on those. The average is like less than six. So that's not a tremendous amount that we're talking about here, that's the property owner's cost. We're not talking about like five million dollars a year or anything like that. It's pretty small.
Well, and if and if you're doing replacement only, it's in the three hundred, so, right?
For a resident, it can be catastrophic for them, but for us, it's a small portion.
I'd be able to contribute more to the sales tax if I have more money. Yeah, we just, we just wish we got that back because you spent money here, but we actually get it back based on population.
Yeah, it doesn't. Makes a little difference, but not a lot.
A lot, but still. Yeah, um, oh, sorry. Yeah, um, oh, sorry. Oh, that one, yeah. It's that one. The not good one? Okay. This is a really big spreadsheet, but we'll, we'll try to, Noah, you jump in, Noah, if you need to correct me. It's probably gonna scroll down. Yeah, go to the, go to the bottom. It's got totals, yeah, there you go. That's, that's better. So we'll, we'll kinda focus, let's go back, yeah, right there, it's good, great. So we'll focus kind of on row one oh-four and one oh-five, one oh-six. So as you look at the brown, so, so A Y and A Z columns, right? That is basically what we sent out to the property owners, right? That's the, the letter they got that said, hey, this is your estimate. Of course, this is the total. So the city share, um, and then keep in mind, we have not added to this spreadsheet the actual street cost. We add that street cost into the spreadsheet once we get that cost, like, once we've been it out. And so when we look at city share here and property owner share, we're just talking about for those specific items at the, on the property, for the property owners, right? So you can see that city share of curb and gutter and sidewalk participation added up to about a hundred and seventy-six. Property owner's share of cost was about nine ninety-seven for a total of one point one. That total's not gonna be the same in every scenario, right? So that's about fifteen percent city, eighty-five percent property owner, right? And then if you go to the right, we did, we ran the same numbers with the fifty percent. And the reason why we ran a fifty percent is we have a resol, in the resolution that if, if a neighborhood is willing to narrow up their street, then we go up to fifty percent because we save on maintenance on a narrower road and it's less costly to build it. And so we increase our participation. So that one's more like a twenty-five, seventy-five split. And then the one that I think you guys have been asking to see the most is in the red, which is what does it look like if the city came in and said, we're just gonna pay for the curb and gutter and the sidewalk is the responsibility of the property owner. And so that one is, uh, basically thirty-eight percent, sixty-two percent. So you can see that nine ninety-seven, five goes down to about seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred for the property owner. And then we can, we got one out to the right of that where we can just dump in any percent and it won't kick out the numbers, that's just, if there was another percent you wanted to look at, so. Some of this is a little skewed because, right, we, we have some large parcels that don't have sidewalk on them, right? So that's based on our policy, right, we, we're not participating in that. And so that's why sometimes you'll see that skewed number a little bit because we don't have that persis, participation. Why, it's not a true thirty percent city versus property owner's share. Yeah, and I, and I do wanna note, it's in orange there, I think this is important. I, I mean, I don't think everybody knows this on the city council, but some of you were here when we did this. So, oh, many, many, I mean, for a long, long time, we had franchise fees coming into the general fund. And then we had some of them going to the streets fund. And I don't remember exactly, I can't remember if it was fifty-fifty on Rocky Mountain Power or not. But we made a decision, um, back in twenty eighteen that we needed more street money. And so we purposely made the decision to move franchise fees from the general fund to the streets. And we did that over several years, right? I think it took three or four years. And then once we were done with that, um, we, we mainly did it with Rocky Mountain Power franchise fees. But then we also ended up moving all the other franchise fees, which the other ones don't add up to a whole lot. Uh, but there was a little bit there, right? And so my estimate today is that that, that decision, that budget decision by the city council is about six hundred and thirty more thousand dollars per year that we have available for street reconstruction. Uh, and if we hadn't done that, you know, you, we would be telling you, you have approximately one point nine million dollars available for street. Unfortunately, the county road and bridge tax has dropped seven hundred thousand dollars. That we received, the mayor and I went, uh, on Monday and visited with the county commissioners and they're looking at that to see if they can change the direction of that fund to hopefully maybe get it coming back up a little bit more, but.
Keith, uh, Keith, if I, if I could, isn't, uh, isn't this, this particular LED, it looked to me like, is an unusually large, uh, curb and gutter replacement LED? I mean, from the, from LIDs in the past, this one is unusually large, is that correct?
Uh, no, not, not necessarily, because we've had somewhere we've gone in and got it, so like a couple of years ago where we went in and redid an entire neighborhood with the curb and gutter. This one probably has a, a lot more non-sidewalk, right? Areas that just don't have sidewalk, um, on the properties. And so that's where you're seeing that. But thi, this does have some areas where this curb and gutter, um, has a lot of slopes, because we'll go out and survey all the curb and gutter to look for drainage. Because obviously the, the thing that we're always trying to battle is making sure that that water is getting off the road into the gutters and then drained out. Um, because anytime you have that ponding water on the roads, people love to drive through, you get this nice big spray, but it's detrimental to our roads. And so those, those are sometimes why we, I will pick up those areas and, and have to do a lot of curb and gutter. So this one does have quite a bit of those areas, but I don't know if it's necessarily, it just depends on where we're at. A lot of these, especially downtown areas, um, they were laid pretty flat when they were initially put in.
And I think that's one of the reasons why a lot of us are favoring city taking all of the curb and gutter because it, it's sort of one of those things where, I don't know, it's kinda not fair really, if you've got a lot of curb and gutters, so you're paying a bunch, but I don't have much, then I don't have to pay hard many, much. So I think it, it really makes sense for the city to take on that, that because it, you know, it's just sort of inequitable, depending on the luck of the draw where you're, where you're at.
I'm a little interested in wondering if the council would consider, I mean, a moratorium on, at least temporarily, while we're sorting this out, figuring out where we wanna go, on requiring new sidewalks. Is there a problem? You, I'm, is there, is that a decision that we can make? Is that, y- you know what I mean, to say, okay, for this project, we have to move forward on this project because it's gonna take us almost two years to try and figure out a new way of funding and, and bringing in taxes and going to the voters and whatever, whatever. Meanwhile, the streets are crumbling. Is there a way to say, well, for now, we're going to exempt the re, the requirement to put in new sidewalks? Is that something we have the power to do? Is that something that we wanna consider?
Yeah, no, absolutely. You guys can make whatever determinations you want. Uh, just to give you some examples, if you will, um, there's some, some areas that we look at, someone says, hey, we're gonna come in and we're, we're looking to redevelop this or develop this section. So we might hold off for a year on the sidewalk going in because the last thing we wanna do is have them pay for this new sidewalk, then they develop it and it gets broken up while they're doing development, right? And so we look at areas like that and people will come in and say, hey, we're, you know, we're gonna develop this. Now, we also don't want to just someone coming in and saying, hey, we're gonna develop this. And it doesn't happen for years and years, right? Because there, there is obviously a benefit in areas, especially where we have pedestrians traveling to not have them on the roads, but to have them on sidewalks. And so, so yeah, there is a balance that we, we look at with that. But ob, obviously council has the determination, if, if you wanna say, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on, on sidewalks, right? And, and we can just pull that out of the, out of the bid or however council wants to, to move on that. It's just understanding what those ramifications are, right, of those choices you make.
Because I was just kinda wondering for the rest of the council, that if we looked at these roads and saw that there's at least one side of the road has a sidewalk and there's a good crosswalk to get over there. Maybe that's a good compromise at this point with prices having gone up so much is to say, we're not gonna require the sidewalk on the other side because pedestrians at least have one side of the road they can walk on, you know? I know that's a, kind of a bit of a hassle, but I, I don't know.
I'm troubled with that right now and some of the fifth west we're looking at, we don't have sidewalk on either side.
Okay.
So then what do we do? Do we pick this side to go or this side to go?
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, who, who do we name?
And on Fifth West, we've got both sides of that that are, have approached as saying, hey, we're, one is actively trying to sell their property, it's zone, I think HDR on it, or high-density residential. Um, and so that's one that they've asked, hey, can, can we hold off, right? Because we're actively trying to sell this so it can be developed. Um, and then on the other side, right, it's just wide open. There actually used to be a trailer court that pulled out, but they're also looking at development. And so Fifth West is kinda unique, because I've got people on both sides that, that are asking to say, hey, can we hold off, uh, a year?
I think we definitely look at some of the sidewalks out there that's saying, we, let's replace them. And you go out and walk them, because I walked this area, say, they're not that bad, really. Maybe we should just leave that one and not have that in LED and do the ones that don't have. So I think we can kinda balance that out better a little bit, maybe.
But I do understand the argument of, okay, if we do that though, then it's gonna be another thirty years plus before we do get there. And it's not bad now, but what's it gonna be like in ten years? So I do get that part, but still, I'm just trying to find ways of how do we pare that down, especially for the homeowner? How do we, how do we limit their liability here?
Now, I think that's a, a good point. So my concern would just be, we would wanna have criteria. So if we wanna adjust our criteria, then we can do that, right? But I wanna have criteria that our engineers are going out and basing it on, so it's not just really subjective. Because that, that's what we did. We set up criteria for replacements, saying, okay, here's where we think we're gonna say it doesn't meet the standards, we wanna bring it up to that standard. And so that's, that's why I'd say if you wanna adjust that criteria, we can look at that. But at, at this point, I would say we need to definitely have a criteria that we're gonna base it off of.
Yes, I don't scrum, you wanna.
Yeah, so that's, that's why we have that criteria, right, is it just helps us delineate and say yes or no. Without that, then it's, right, just really arbitrary of, of whose opinion are we gonna go off of?
Isn't, is that the part that has the bike path? I'm not saying bike paths are the same because I'm a pedestrian too, but doesn't that part have a bike?
Yeah, on, on, you're talking about Fifth West, South Fifth West, yes, we have, we have bike lanes on both.
But, um, so I'm, I'm someone that likes to experiment. I feel like if we just keep doing it the same way, we don't try anything new, then we stay where we always are. So like, I'm open to, to his suggestion. So then I know after Park Street, the council did say, let's stay out of residential areas. So have, has that been?
Well, we didn't say, let's stay out of them, we said let's.
We kind of did.
Let's kinda wait, let's say, let's wait until they, till the residents want.
Well, that's what I mean, so no involuntary, um, LED. So has, like, why did that change? I guess I was surprised to see as many on there.
So Park Street is, or not, well, Park Street kind of has a lot, we're still, we're still moving forward on, on road reconstruction now. If you wanna say these ones are off limits unless people come in, then you can give us that, that list of, because I mean, obviously we've got roads all over that are in bad shape. Um, and if, if you wanna do that, uh, we can, we can definitely look at that for you. Um, but I mean, definitely these, these ones are more, I would say heavily traveled roads, more collector-type roads. Um, but we're always gonna be bordering up against some sort of, of residential in some, in some regard, right? I don't think we get away from that unless I'm just only doing downtown.
Well, I think it'll be good to try to, I know government doesn't make, shouldn't make huge changes, right? So, but, but I am in favor of holding off and trying to figure out some of these things that we've, that we've talked about. And I still think the easiest solution is doing fewer streets in an LED and having the city pick up more of the cost. Yeah, not as many streets so that the city has.
Yeah, I, I, I think, and, and I think the, the one column that we showed where we pick up, you know, uh, I mean, it would be a lot bigger percentage if we went with curb and gutter.
Yeah, mayor, mayor, from my point of view, I think, I think making that accommodation with the curb and gutter, uh, uh, that certainly it, it, there's still gonna be expense to homeowners for, for sidewalk. But relieving that curb and gutter and, and putting that on the city, I think that's a pretty good, pretty good gesture, uh, from our point of view. I'm, I'm not, I'm not one to totally upend the whole cart and try and find, uh, uh, I may not, if there were, if there was funding sources available that I thought we could actually tap into, I, I, I certainly would pursue it. I, I'm not, I, in this, in our, in the, in the day and age that we are right now and the politics involved, I'm just not one to go out and try and raise taxes, which is what we do if we go to a general bond. So, so my, my opinion is we s, we step up, take care of the curb and gutter, uh, keep the, keep the, uh, the, the sidewalks again to the homeowner. That's, you know, when they bu, build a new home, they have to put a sidewalk in and, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that some individuals are gonna have to pay for that over time, but, but I think it's, it's, it's certainly, uh, a, a good first step on our part to help the, the, uh, and, and, and still keep that LED philosophy in place where the, the most bene, the, the person who benefits the most pays for the improvement. That's my, that's my two bits.
And in your analysis, on that column that had the city doing a hundred percent of the curb and gutter, my concern was that some of the property owners had an assessment of twenty thousand, fifteen thousand. If we do a hundred percent of curb and gutter, how did that impact those kinds of assessments? What did they come down to?
We could go. You can scroll up on that sheet.
Are you saying curb and gutter even if they didn't have an existing one? Are we, have we, are we talking about that?
Yeah, I think we're saying we just cover curb and gutter.
If, if it's not existing, so there's, okay. So, so my caution, right, would just be, these roads that are county roads, right, as a developer comes in to develop out that county road, are we gonna pay for that curb and gutter? Because that's a sizable cost that you're gonna see on all these farm grounds that are gonna eventually develop into subdivisions or areas like that. I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah, Keith, my, my opinion would be that we do that only on reconstruction, that we step up to a hundred percent on reconstruction, uh, only.
And I, I agree with that because we, we're currently charging, I mean, if, if somebody comes in and it's an existing county road and we're, and they wanna put a subdivision, we require them to pay for curb and gutter on those roads and stuff. So I think that would stay. Is there any place on any of this, these roads, uh, in LED fifty-four that don't have curb and gutter currently?
Uh, no, no, the, all these ones have existing curb and gutter, so that's. Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking out to future and look, thinking of all the areas within our city limits, right? That don't currently have curb and gutter. And there's a, there's a fair amount.
I guess that is, that is a point.
I wanna, I wanna, right, just, just, right, as, as you make decisions, right? I wanna make sure you have all the information, so that way you can make a determination and say, okay, that, that might be too much or no, that, that fits with what we're.
And Keith, and just so you know, in full disclosure, I don't have curb and gutter in my front yard, but if it was to come into my yard, I would determine that not to be reconstruction. That would be new construction and all of a sudden, I'm, I'm on the hook. So I understand that fully because it would impact me.
It's, I mean, if you wanna do.
We could, yeah, we can pull one up, um.
Are you okay if we look?
Keith, another real quick question. Where I live, like I said, I don't have, I've got the ribbon. Is that the new thing that the city is doing everywhere or is that simply because of where I live?
The zoning, yeah.
Okay.
Right, our, our two zone, we just, we went to, at first it was just put in as regular asphalt, right? But really, you wanna protect that edge of that asphalt and that's where that concrete ribbon curb?
Yeah, it makes perfect sense, but why was there not a curb and, and gutter system like it is in the rest of the city?
So, so your, your drainage is supposed, you're supposed to have a swell in your front yard and that water's supposed in your front yard, and that water's supposed to run into that swell. And that's how we take care of the stormwater versus the normal curb and gutter where we capture all that water and then put it in to an infiltration system.
So am I not in L D R one, I guess? Or, I mean, cause I'm near where the big, where the mayor lives. Am I, is that not L D R one? I mean.
No, if you're a half acre lot.
Half acre lot, yeah. R R two, oh. Look at what I'm learning. As a homeowner, you think I would know some of these things? Okay, so in all our R twos, then that's the way it's gonna be done.
That's, that's, yeah, going forward. Now, we do have an, an R R two in Willowbrook subdivision that, that went in without that on it, so.
Can we also look at what it would look like if we picked up the cost of the curb and gutter and kept the thirty percent on the sidewalk that we already are doing?
Yeah, yeah, no, for sure. We can look at that. We ha, I think we have that. We did a ton of different analysis. Hit the plus, uh, up there, Deb, sorry, under, by BG, BG, I think it's that one. Does that say it?
Yeah.
Especially, yeah. So this is what I think you're saying, Brianna. If we did a hundred percent, sorry, I gotta be able to read it, a hundred percent curb and gutter, thirty percent sidewalk, but just replacement of sidewalk, is that calculation not new? And then that takes it from seven twenty-two down to about six sixty. And just, just so you guys know, I mean, this has a lot, I mean, it's a very large amount of new sidewalk. It's about three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars of new sidewalk. So.
And, and people can get their own contractor. Hundred percent is only for replacement of sidewalk.
And that's why you don't see like a huge, huge difference. I mean, granted, it's sixty-two thousand roughly, right? But it's because the, the new would be a hundred percent responsibility of the property owner as per our current policy, right?
And I know it sounds like I'm the only one that that bothers, but I guess to me, I still see it differently, that they've been living there and now we're telling them they have to put theirs. That's hard for me to.
If you move into a brand new house, it's the same thing.
But you chose to move into a brand new house. That was your choice. And these people are living in that home and they're not having a choice of whether they want the sidewalk or not. That's hard, that's hard to see.
Is there a, a number calculation up here that shows what if we were to pay the whole thirty percent?
If I move into a house, I say, well, I don't want a sidewalk.
I don't think we have that one.
No, we haven't put that one together.
Any rough estimate of what that would look like?
Well, you could do thirty percent of three hundred. Thirty percent of three sixteen seven, so it'd be another. I know you guys probably got it.
It was a hundred thousand.
So you're, you're about a hundred and ten thousand additional dollars. Additional. So to do what I think maybe you're saying is if the city were to help with thirty percent of even new sidewalks in this area, that would add another hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, so it'd take it down to about five fifty.
And lower theirs. Yeah, so.
Keith, do they use any contracts they want as far as sidewalk state to suit?
Yeah, it just needs to meet our standards of that, but, yeah.
License.
And also this, if you use your own contractor, the city will, I can also finance this through the L I D.
And, and I think the other thing that we've discussed, right, I don't know if we've discussed it in the last O I D meeting with, with the residents here, but you know, we, we can always lower the interest rate as well to help. I think that you gotta find a happy balance there, because, you know, if we just did like a very, very low interest rate, everybody's like, well, now we're gonna pay that thing off. Then, then you lose some of your ability to continue to do that, because we have to still meet our cash flow needs.
So where are we at now, three and a half?
Uh, no, we've been more in the five, five and a half.
So if I'm reading this right, Nathan, he is volunteered to use his as a guinea pig. He's number three, or sir, eighty-three, fifth west eighty-three.
I do have sidewalks. They're actually in pretty good condition. I actually would probably argue about the driveway portion at the end too, but I'm sure he that I could talk, you know, but.
But his curb and gutter.
I mean, again, sorry, the sidewalks against the curb and gutter? Yeah. Yeah, that cross slope is what takes us out of that federal. Right, generally back in the day.
Curb and gutter alone is out of ten thousand dollars, it's seven thousand. It's actually, no, it's eight thousand, over eighty-three hundred dollars. So, oh wait, am I reading that right? Oh, cost thirteen. Oh, sorry, out of thirteen. His, his share was ten, but, but yeah.
About eleven thousand, so, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, ten nine seventy-six, yeah, about eleven. So, but the curb and gutter, so like if, if we decide to take on the curb and gutter hundred percent, that's seven thousand one twenty plus four forty-five for excavation, plus thirteen thirty-five for removal of old concrete. So that's a big chunk. We paid that, Nathan, have a lot of money to go spend, pay more sales tax, right?
You're right, I'll go to Rexford Rapids more, I'll go to a few other places, you know.
Yeah, that'll make it.
Otherwise, I'm answering now, man.
Keith, uh, Keith, Matt, if you could help me, I just received a text that questioned whether we, in, in L I D fifty-one, did we pay for the curb and gutter a hundred percent?
No. Fifty-one was fifty-one.
So, oh, is that the one on?
That's Chad's, Chad Nansel. Uh, there's, there's, when we, so when we came through and we redid all the curb we got in there, there's areas that met the city standard. And we picked up those ones that met the city standard. The areas that didn't meet the city standard, the homeowner paid for that. So, so not, we didn't, we didn't pick up a hundred percent of the curb and gutter on that. But there is areas that we did pick up when we redo the entire stretch. We pick up that area that meets our standards, right?
If it had to be torn out just because, so because of the grading and stuff, but it was actually in really good shape and wouldn't, otherwise wouldn't have had to have been torn out because it was still in good shape. And, and then there's another one too. Someone else asked me a question, just so that you know. They said down on, further down on fifth west, they said, well, I have a friend who lives down there and they, and they said that they didn't have to pay for any curb and gutter. And they didn't, because we didn't own that right of way. So we traded them basically, uh, we traded them new curb and gutter for the cost of the right of way. Otherwise, we would have had to pay cash for the right of way in order to widen that street, because we went into their front yards, remember? We had to cut into their front yards. We had to purchase right of way from them. So instead of us buying right of way from them and them paying for the curb and gutter, we just traded, we made a trade, so.
So, so, so going forward, going forward, there will always be those kinds of accommodations made, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if, yeah, I, it was just an, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah. So. Anyway, um, so, I don't know, I mean, I guess, I think from what I've heard, we're, we're kind of leaning towards going, taking on the curb and gutter
This isn't a decision?
I mean, yeah, we're not making a decision right now.
Today, there's, there's no action item?
Get a general consensus of what we're.
Telling us staff, what on the policy would you like us to change? And then we can bring that forward to a council meeting for an actual action item on that. Yeah, and Deb has the policy up. We would basically change it, right, bring it back, like Keith's saying, so that you guys can review it and say, yeah, we agree with that, change it to that. And there can always be additional discussions too, right?
Well, I like to see.
Tell the action item.
On the sidewalk, I like to see us, no, thirty percent, we pay thirty percent still.
On which one?
On the sidewalk.
Sidewalk case?
Curb and gutter, we take care of the curb and gutter. Hundred percent, hundred percent for the city, hundred percent city. And on the driveways, has to be thirty percent.
That's what I, I'm interested in that too, because I think that's what helps the most is if you keep the thirty percent you already offer and then you add.
Of the curbing up.
But I still.
Lower the interest rate.
That's gonna be a, a lot bigger hit on your budget.
Well, we can do fewer streets too, if we want to compensate for that in the L I Ds. I know it doesn't sound like anyone else, so no other council members are interested in trying to help people who don't have the sidewalk, existing sidewalks already.
They were open to kind of worms.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm sorry, but I feel like as property owners, we need to have some skin in the game too, and all that the city just doesn't pay for everything. You know, and, uh, I think by putting, you know, taking this hundred percent of the curb and gutter, that's a, that's a pretty big chunk that we're paying for and, uh, taking on. And I, and I, I have no problem with that. I think rightfully, I think that makes sense, really.
To me, that makes more sense, because you talk to most people that they talk to me, the curb and gutter feels like a street. It feels like it's harsh. Right. And then we're just going to homeowners and saying, no, you gotta pay for this. To me, that's definitely is a separation there that we can make.
Yeah.
I know it's gonna be very burden on a lot of ones that don't have a sidewalk. But in the homes I've built, I've had to put my sidewalk in after I built that home. It depends on if we don't want to have some little sidewalks and have it in. Uh, as we move the city to have more walkway, more people walking, we need the sidewalks. We don't want them walking the streets. So we need to balance that.
And, and I think some of the concessions that we can help with, uh, I think are good too, like, you know, we can have, you, you can have people come in and do the excavation, put in the base, pack it down. That stuff can be easily done by, you know, people that you know, if, if they know how to do it. I know a lot of people have done that, uh, over here on uh, first east up here in the older part of town. A lot of them did their own excavation work, their own base prep. Some of them even had poured their own cement. And then you can do stuff like that to cut down on the costs. And then by spreading it out over ten years and lowering that interest rate, I think that's helping to spread that cost out and that kind of a thing. So, so I think, you know, it's, it's good for the, you know, the homeowners to have some skin in the game and we can do whatever we can to help ease that burden and make it lighter um, with some of these other things we're talking about. But I, I feel like it's reasonable for us to pick up a hundred percent of that curb and gutter cost and that'll make a big difference right there. Make a big chunk.
I'm just glad that we're talking about it, because I looked, when we first started talking about this, I looked at my mom or my kids, my young kids are just getting pregnant at home. I said, there's no possible way on some of this. And I'm glad we at least talking about it and bringing it up to the public, so they're saying, what can we do better? I mean, that's what we spent hours on trying to figure this out. I mean, is it a, would I like to pay for everything? Yeah. But I don't think financially to balance our budget unless we want to take away from some safety and other things that we have to, there will be, and I don't want to do that. I mean, we gotta sit there and keep that balanced budget and try to lessen the burden on the citizens also.
Will we talk about passing this before L I D fifty-four?
Yes. In fact, we can do it in the next meeting if we want to. And I, that's kind of what I need to propose.
You don't necessarily have to pass it before L I D fifty-four, but that could, whatever we change on it.
That's true, because the bills won't be sent out till it's done, so.
Yeah, so, so, so there is time, but, but sometimes it's nicer to pass it before so then property owners have an understanding.
I agree.
Along the driveway, that's only the portion that, that we have to take to meet A D. Everyone did the whole driveway, they gotta take care of the rest.
Yes, just that section, so on that cross slope, that's, that's always where we hit that, so.
Hey, is there any other questions?
So make sure I've got it clear. We're gonna keep the sidewalk thirty percent and it's all replacement, right? We're just doing replacement. Thirty percent sidewalk, hundred percent curb and gutter, and thirty percent if it needs to be replaced to meet ADA standards on that.
Oh, yeah.
And then are you guys, you guys good to keep the fifty percent option as, as well in the narrow the roads?
So what you're saying is if the sidewalk's in pretty good condition, but it needs to be replaced just for the ADA standard, then we'll do still the thirty percent.
The driveway.
The, the driveway.
The sidewalk would always be thirty percent.
Keith, is there any way we look at that standard we have and see if we can balance that a little bit different?
Yeah, I'd love to have a discussion with you on it, so.
I don't know what's, what do you exactly have there? I know that there's the ADA and all that other.
Yeah, so it's, it's on our website. You can go through and take a look at it.
I have some, but it's like, say it's.
No, we can, we can definitely have a discussion on it. It's just, it's just, right, as we set that level, right? And you think, okay, the next thirty, forty years, what level are we, are we keeping it at, right? Where we're taking the curb and gutter, right, then, then we're gonna set that, that standard, right? But on the sidewalk, right, that's, that's the one we wanted to say, well, at what level do we want to set that standard at? Right? At the, at the end of the day, a lot of it has to do with tripping hazards, uh, cracks in there, just deterioration of the, the concrete. But we can, it's always open to council discussion. Uh, sometimes that cost, right, depending if you have someone who's coming in that has a grinder to grind them down. Uh, but, you know, those, those could be things that a homeowner could come in and say, hey, can we, can we do this differently, right? And we could take a look at that, so.
It's one of the things, I guess, during the council drive around, you could take a look at a bunch of those different things and, you know, have, talk about what, what kind of a standard you wanna have. That might be a good thing for the drive around.
I have just one more question. I know narrowing the road is a pretty hot topic too. There's a lot of strong feelings about that. But have we asked the people, they were, does that apply in any of these that we could narrow or no?
Well, the thing, the thing that kind of comes into play there is how much curb and gutter am I taking out? And if I'm not taking out much curb and gutter, right, then, then we, there's a significant cost in there that we, it's that balance that we're looking at with that. But no, we haven't, we haven't approached anyone on any of these roads to say, let's, let's take a look at narrowing it up. Um, so, and a lot of these are more collector ish type roads, and then the other ones are downtown, um, where we do see a lot of parking on the, on the streets on both sides. Um, in neighborhoods, it's, it's really good if we can narrow and say, cause how often are people parking on both sides of the road all the way down, right? That's a lot of asphalt that we're maintaining that really doesn't need to be there. We've also lowered one of our standards to, to cut out five feet of asphalt and narrow up the road. Narrowing up the road is beneficial in the sense of it's tighter, cars generally drive slower on those roads, especially in neighborhoods like that. But when we look at our collector and bigger roads, generally we're not looking to narrow those ones.
So you are asking when it applies, you are asking.
Yeah, if it is something, then I would come in and say, council, this was one we think we should look at narrowing.
Are you looking, some said that they have work that's planned, but does it need to be done? Are you looking at those issues as well in this L I D?
Yeah, those are the two, uh, that we've been approached, right? The one that's the, they're selling their property, actively trying to sell their property and, and I believe it's H D R one. And so they would like, right now, it's, I think there's a residential home and then, um, is it a residential hometown?
Yeah.
Fourplex and drive. Yeah. Um, so those, those ones generally we've allowed that unless council tells me differently.
That's reasonable. They don't want all that construction work.
Yeah.
And, and we tried to balance that, right? If it doesn't happen, we just throw them on another L I D later on and say, well, nothing's moved. We feel like that sidewalk needs to go.
Hey, all right, well, we will stand adjourned then. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate your comments and thoughts and we'll kind of move that direction.
We can look at those standards.